Good evening, everyone. It is five thirty P M on eight thirty first two thousand twenty three. That special joint meeting, the Sandpoint City Council, the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers. At City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Rundstedt, presiding, also President or Counselors Kate McAllister, Deb Poole, Justin Dick, and Jason Welker. Andy Gluck to be here shortly. Joel Espiro is absent today. And thanks for making it, Deb. I'll now yield the floor to Planning and Zoning Chairman. Who's the chair right now? John, Mr. Hastings, please take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings, also President Commissioners Moes Dunkel, Slate Camp, Ben McGrand, Grant Simmons, Wayne Penner. Commissioner Amelia Boyd is absent.
Okay. Will now rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But the record show that Andy Groth has now joined us. Thank you, Mr. Groth, Counselor. So this special meeting has been scheduled as a joint work session between to discuss the comprehensive plan update. We will not be taking any public, public comment this, this evening, as this is a work session only. So I'll now yield the floor to City Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council and Commission for coming together for this meeting. I think it's a good opportunity for the two bodies to interact and raise any questions or concerns moving forward. Also with us tonight, in addition to Sir Gilmore, our Associate Planner, is Miriam McGilchrist from Logan Simpson. She has worked on this plan since the beginning. And so what I just thought we would do is talk briefly. I just wanted to do a brief kind of where we've been, what the, the process, the planning commission has gone through for the comprehensive plan. Then Miriam will give an overview of the documents. And, and that really just to open it up. Again, because the commission has been intimately involved in this, but council hasn't. I'm sure there's lots of questions you have, or just really an opportunity to have this interaction. Again, we know was a very long process. We've had different opportunities for the public to engage, but we do know that they tend to come at the very end. So the reason we really wanted to have this is if there are any fatal flaws or major changes that need to happen, we'd rather know that before we start scheduling the public hearing, so there's changes to make. So that's really why we wanted to get the two bodies together. Again, it's just been a really long process. You started this process in September of twenty nineteen with the project kickoff, the public engagement plan, sorry. And that's when a lot of the data collection occurred. There were visioning events and workshops in twenty twenty. And then there was the pause due to the pandemic, as well as staff changes. The plan was picked up again in August of twenty-two when we started doing again, just a reaffirmation of the work that had been done and the engagement for visioning to make sure that that was still legitimate. Then we did some additional outreach on housing and neighborhood workshops. And we did a follow-up survey just based on not getting a lot of people to the workshops. And during this period as well, the commission was just reviewing draft chapters, the different chapters of the plan. Then in March, all that was put together into the initial draft and the Planning and Zoning Commission had a workshop with Miriam just to make further changes or revisions, because now we, they looked at chapters kind of individually, pulling them all together. And then decided that was the draft that they wanted additional input on. We scheduled the workshops and the online posting of the plan. Those, and then that, that incorporated comments from the public that were incorporated into a further draft, which is the draft that we are discussing tonight. And again, we keep kind of pushing out the, the ultimate adoption timeline, but we are hopeful based on the date today being the end of May, getting through any possible changes through June and then the whole publication that we could eventually get this adopted by August would be the outside goal. I'll just do a brief overview again of the twelve chapters. And Miriam will go into these a little more detail, but the ones with the red boxes are those chapters that the content strongly came out of other adopted plans. So Chapter Three came. A lot of that came directly out of the Arts Culture and Historic Preservation Chapter. Chapter Six, the Multimodal Transportation Plan. Chapter Seven, the Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan. And then Chapter Nine incorporated a lot of the Leland Study data as the background information to that.
Made your job easier, didn't it?
Sorry?
Made your job easier, didn't it?
Yes, it did. We appreciate. So that's the overview. That's, you know, the, the twelve chapters that are laid out. And with that, I think I will, if there aren't any questions before we get going, I will just turn it over to Miriam to give a little more in-depth overview of the document.
Maybe before we do that, just for Commissioners, I want to thank you very much. This is this is a heavy lift and it's something that the community has been asking for, for a long time. I know some of you on the commission have been there and helping the city for many, many years. Some are relatively new. That's actually very helpful. Gives that extra set of eyes, gives some of that longevity, that veteran aspect. And I think that you clearly understand the pressure that the community has on all of us to do a good job with this. So I thank you for doing some really hard work, some really long hours and engaging with our public. So for that, thank you.
Okay, Miriam, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. And everyone can hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. See PowerPoint. Here we go. So again, congratulations. This is a big step for you and you've come a long way. And I really want to congratulate everyone at the table for pulling this together, how far it's been. So as Amy mentioned, I'm going to walk through a little bit more in detail about the content of the plan. This is a high-level kind of graphic understanding of those twelve chapters. Really, we have two intro chapters. One is, you know, what is the plan, how to use it. And then the second chapter is community vision. We then have nine chapters that are topic-specific, followed by a final implementation plan chapter. And this structure should not be unfamiliar to you. This is largely pulling from the existing two thousand nine comprehensive plan structure, using kind of intro chapters, needy topic-based chapters, and then implementation. Although we have made some tweaks in terms of how we organize them, where we are putting some of the topics. And of course, updating the, the content, not only the data, but the direction that, that we propose and the goals and objectives. I will also note that in the appendices, we have an implementation table on acronyms and definitions, the required regulatory takings checklist, and then an engagement summary. That engagement summary is pretty robust and actually now includes a summary from the, the feedback and the engagement that we had at the draft plan open house and draft plan commenting period. And it also includes a table of all the comments that we received and how we have addressed them. So if you're curious to to see how that all came together, you can see that at the very back of the plan. So introduction, this is kind of a, you know, what is the plan, what is the planning process, how to use the document. It does have a short community profile to kind of ground the reader in what Sandpoint's all about. I also have on the screen here those relevant plans and studies that Amy mentioned that we integrated into this, into this update. So it includes a lot of those recent master plans that have been accomplished and adopted in the last few years. It also references some of the Bonner County plans, like the Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Airport Plan, as well as that Housing and Economic Analysis that was, that was done by Leland. And then, of course, in Idaho, there are seventeen required planning components, and I just wanted to put that up on the screen. This is a heavy lift to, to have to address all of these, and this plan successfully does that hopefully in a user-friendly, easy-to-find, easy-to-maneuver document. So Chapter Two really outlines that community vision, what are we going to, you know, the, if you don't know where you're going, you might not get there type of thing. We need to know what we're shooting for. So this is a revised vision statement. Sandpoint values its culture, history, and connections to outstanding natural resources and works with intention to ensure a vibrant, resilient community for generations to come. That statement is supported by five pillars of vibrant culture, resilient economy, sustainable development, responsive government, and livable community. And you'll see these reflected in each of the topic chapters in the goals and policies. We've taken a shot at trying to integrate and, and kind of cross-reference those goals back to which of these pillars those goals are relevant to. Just to kind of close the loop here and make sure that we are doing our due diligence and really designing our goals and objectives to reach these, these directives in this vision.
Miriam, quick question. I know those are pulled from the strategic plan, but I didn't see reference to that on your formal list. And so is that explicit in the document?
It is explicit in the document, yes. Chapter Three, Community Character and Design. This, again, integrates that Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Plan, as well as the two thousand two Urban Forestry Management Plan. So really pulling from those, those two plans and making sure that we have a robust, robust goals about identity, historic preservation, urban forestry, and arts and culture. I want to also note that a new goal focuses on gateways and design, design that creates a sense of community. That's goal number five here. Chapter Four is Land Use and Growth. So these goals, efficient land use is, is a carryover, the first goal. But we've strengthened it to really articulate that land use efficiency comes through redevelopment, infill, and appropriate clustered and density solutions. We've also expanded focus neighborhoods, or excuse me, expanded the focus on neighborhoods and mixed-use development. A focus on quality places and livability, and that means streetscape design, public spaces, multimodal connectivity, balancing uses, reliable infrastructure, kind of all the nuts and bolts that you don't see, but actually makes a space and makes it work. And then this chapter also has a goal that helps coordinate the infrastructure and development in the area of city impact. So pairing these goals, we also have the Future Land Use Map and Category Descriptions, as well as an Area of City Impact map. This is an updated format and kind of visual of the map to be a little bit more modern and reflect, of course, the, the changes that we've made to the, the categories. Most notably, you'll see we do not have context areas anymore. That was one of the two thousand nine's pretty unique aspects, I'd say. The, the context areas were, I think, still intending to, to describe urban form density, but didn't have the more traditional labels, I'd say, you know, context area one, two, three, four. You don't intuitively know what that really refers to. So we have updated the, the categories to be more intuitively named and re-characterizing what those look like. Of course, those new categories still provide guidance on character density, land uses, but are intended to be a little bit more user-friendly. And I guess most notably, in the, in the document, we do try to crosswalk what the two thousand nine context areas were and how we translated or tweaked those into these new categories. So you see that in the document. But public and quasi-public is a new category. We felt that it was worthwhile to call out the public, I guess, uses, schools, town facilities, county facilities, that type of thing. Of course, we, we have parks and open space as their own category, but just to indicate that quite a bit of the city is public work, a quasi-public use, and not really intending to change. This is that Area of City Impact map. Most notably on this is that we have not changed the land uses within the Area of City Impact. And this is due to, unfortunately, we haven't, the negotiations with the county didn't align with the development of this plan. So they are intended to be updated upon negotiations and understanding of the Area of City Impact boundary and kind of development standards agreement with the county. So the, this map still shows those context areas within that growth management or Area of City Impact boundary. And as part of that future amendment or agreement with the county, hopefully, we're, we're suggesting to shrink back that boundary to a little bit more reasonable, manageable size, really to reflect what could be legitimately serviced by utilities and, and actually see some sort of urban level growth. Of course, this, this is, there are constraints with topography, utility extension, infrastructure. So through those negotiations in the future, we, we do have a kind of a diagrammatic dotted line on the map to indicate what that future boundary might look like, but you'll see it is significantly pulled back.
Miriam, can I stop you for a sec? Wouldn't, wouldn't we, through this process, wouldn't we want to you know, lay out what our intention is with, with the change? And I know we've, we've done some work there. As you said, you've kind of laid out the dotted ley line there that, that shows where we would want to see that urban growth or the, the boundary which we could see that urban area grow. But then also changing the land use categories. And we can certainly make note that, you know, these aren't that, that there's a, these are, I guess, in process, or there's still a process necessary to have it approved by the county before it's official, but it, it seems like while we're going through this process, we should kind of at least put down sort of our, you know, our best our best ideas how we want to move forward with the ACI, don't you think?
It's a little bit and I'm, maybe I'll let Amy jump in here too. Certainly, we, we had identified tentative land use categories through, through this process for the ACI. But we ultimately decided as, as a group that this would be premature without really understanding the nuances of of that agreement with the county. But it's kind of a chicken or the egg scenario, and I've worked with a lot of other communities, cities and counties in Idaho as they're updating their comprehensive plans and trying to negotiate those ACI boundaries at the same time. And it does feel like, well, do you wait for the the agreement first, or do you put something on paper? So I don't know, Amy, do you want to add to that?
Sure. Yeah. In the narrative, we, we mentioned that most likely the majority land use will be residential with potential some mixed-use nodes or nodes that have commercial. But because we really hadn't started that process, we didn't want to change what the current ACI is with current agreement too much. I mean, realistically, if we were to put our land uses there now, what we anticipated would probably be, you know, low-density clustered and low-density, maybe a little medium, and maybe some neighborhood mixed use. But we just felt that because the, there's two actions in Appendix A. One is to renegotiate and come up with a sub-area plan for that. So because of that, what comes out of that sub-area plan will really determine what the land uses are. We just thought, well, we're just gonna move forward without rocking the boat at this point.
Amy, what if you change the wording of tentative to proposed? Because I think what the mayor is getting at a bit is we've kind of, the county's been asking us to draw in the boundary, and we've pretty much landed at what that boundary is, based on what we can serve through utilities and realistically where we could grow in twenty years. So I, I think, I think maybe from the standpoint that it, it's not really tentative going into negotiations for us. That's kind of where we are with a proposed boundary. And I understand the element of the land use and, and that certainly hasn't happened, but I, I think what the mayor is asking about is drawing in and making clarity around what our proposed boundary will be.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Jen. That's exactly right. And, and I think even a little bit more than that. I just feel like this is our opportunity to propose what we as a community think. And I know we don't know everything, right? Yeah. And, and through the negotiation, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, get further into that granular detail and further vetting and consideration. But I feel like, you know, here we're going through this process. We're, we're putting our time and, and efforts together to come up with a good plan. We're inviting public input. It makes sense to get feedback on what we think is the best proposal that we could put forward, that we would then want to invite the county to respond to. Because if we just, you know, sit down with the county and, and don't put forward a proposition, this is what we would like to see. We somewhat vetted this as a community. This is where we'd like to go, then they don't have anything to respond to. And I think we're in a much better negotiation position if we're assertive from the start about what we, what we're trying to achieve here.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And on, on the tentative versus proposed, we did a very, you know, just kind of a curvature line, because we know ultimately that line will either follow section lines or road rights away, and we didn't want to raise a lot of red flags at this point. So that's why we made it just kind of, we know that's about as far as utilities can go, but what those actual boundaries are.
But it was largely avoiding specificity.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I had a quick comment just about, you mentioned the different context areas or the new definitions, but you didn't mention the quasi-public area. And I think we all need to be very aware that if we do expand this direction, that we definitely are going to need another elementary school. And we have no plans to put anything anywhere nor no land. So I'd like all of us to keep that in the back of our heads, that there is already a great need for that. So we may want to make mention of that or speak to a little bit more relative to the area of city impact.
And, and I, you know, fully understand that, that we do need to give the ACI its own special attention, but I just feel like, you know, we would do ourselves well to do something more than simply regurgitate what we had from two thousand nine in the ACI. You know what I mean?
I agree. We need to go in there with what we want and, and then be willing to negotiate.
Yeah.
And play nice if that's even possible.
Or is this conversation even on the radar of Bonner County right now? And it seems like it's been on the radar for three or four years. Are, are there plans to move forward with the renegotiation of the ACI in the next year?
I, I've been discussing with the planning director. It's just, it, it's kind of their board is in a similar situation as councils that you're, the agendas are so packed, it hasn't risen to the top. And that's why we wanted to just kind of move forward with this. But yeah, they know that that is our next step is going to be coming to them and saying, we want to really go shape that ACI.
And I would just respond to your comment, Amy, that you know, I think in terms of response from the public, you know, my perception is that, well, yes, people are, you know, anytime their property is included in a map-colored area and it's designated in some way, shape, or form, that there's, it kind of evokes a reaction. But we're doing, you know, we're receding from where the current boundary is. You know, this, this proposal is dramatically reducing the area city impact. So I, I would think that overall that would have a you know, I think the county overall would be really comfortable with that. In fact, originally, that's what they came to us when they, they wanted to negotiate this, what was it, five, six years ago? The former board and, and that's, that was their request, is they were willing to give a little if the city was willing to reduce the area city impact boundary. So I think that, you know, we've got a lot to, a lot of room to negotiate there. And I think it would still be received well from the public, because it is a reduction of the boundary, a huge reduction of the boundary.
I did have a follow-up on that. While, acknowledging that while we're talking about reducing the, obviously the size of it in terms of amount of land, we're also, I assume, talking about imposing a little bit more regulatory oversight within that smaller perimeter. For example, I think there's something in our city code right now about building permits, subdivision requests, rezon request within the ACI having to be reviewed by the city of Sandpoint. And I'm not sure we do any of that currently. Do we, do we enforce that part of our code right now? But as I understand, and I would hope that as moving forward, if we do wish to seriously consider moving our, we're annexing some of this ACI into Sandpoint, we do start enforcing that part of code where, like, what goes on in that ACI, if we're serious about, let's say, putting sewer and water under, under Baldi the west of the tracks, like, we should be paying closer attention to potential subdivision that's going on there now.
Right. And, and the way it is right now, we get to comment on it.
Comment.
So.
Doesn't our code say that we should have approval? Like, it should be required approval from the city?
No.
Is that something we wish to negotiate with the county, though?
We have a template agreement that we had agreed to with the former planning director at the county, and I've shared it with Amy. It's, and I believe Amy shared it with the current planning director at the county. It's based on what some of the other cities and counties are doing across the state. And, and the board, when we have been having regular meetings, the former board, they were agreeable to the terms of that. And under that, what would happen in the ACI areas, the Bonner County would adopt our codes and our fees and our processes. So it would be full building reviews and all of our requirements. It would go through full city review in the ACI is what's contained in that, that agreement that we were using as model.
Once the negotiations are started here, what do we anticipate for time to get this thing done? Is this, are you, are Is this, are you, or negotiations gonna be finished by the time we roll this up to the public? In August?
No.
Or is this like a year long process, or what are we dealing with?
Easily, and and again, what we wanna do is is work with them on. A um sub area plan, so this is the boundary, first we agree on what is this boundary. Then what what is the sub area plan, where are we gonna have road connections, utilities? Um, and then what are the regulations, what are those city regulations that would apply in the ACI? So it will be at least a year process, and that's why we, you know, we wanted to go forward, get. The comp plan updated, um, because while those negotiations are going on, we can then be working on. The codes in at the city level that we need to update.
So Amy, do we? To come back to this, to the mayor's point of saying, hey, there's an opportunity to maybe pay place a little, for lack of a better term, stake in the ground. Around what we see as the future state, I think we have enough intelligence such that we could go back and probably refine this a little bit, right?
To put in the land use.
Yeah, well, I mean, specifically around, like, we think about like the southwest corner, I I recall talking about that there was. That was the reality in terms of the the of what we anticipate the effect of area being. I think we have that information, though, such that we could probably draw a more finite map.
We could, my only concern is we could show it all clustered residential or low density. And then, you know, there's a big environmental area and that that just raised red, but but we certainly can do it, I think, you know. We know in general what the anticipated land uses will be.
But I would, I would suggest possibly. Including the uh proposed land use designations in a revised ACI as. An appendix buried deep in the back of this document. I mean, I've learned something in planning in the last four years that you don't always reveal everything you desire at in at the risk of pissing people off. So to speak, and I fear that like showing this, oh, here we just unveil our our new comp plan. We have, we've engaged our citizens in the development of this plan, but we haven't made active efforts to reach out to people within that revised ACI. So what do you think about us calling your neighborhood, you know? Uh, whatever mixed use or whatever versus dispersed rural, whatever. So I I would suggest holding that a little close right now until we have engaged the county in negotiations. Just a thought, you know, we have, we know what we envisioned for that, I think, maybe. You can share a version of that with with the with the city, but. Putting it right there in the plan is a little little bit presumption, I think.
I I appreciate this discussion and just to play devil's advocate here to my own suggestion, um. You know, maybe it does give us a better negotiating position to go in like this. And and let the county tell us that they want us to reduce our ACI, right? And then they're asking for something, we can ask for something in return, rather than going forward and saying, we wanna reduce our ACI and. And also, we wanna ask for other things. Right, so I don't know, maybe we should just leave it as is and address this when we get to negotiation.
I think the challenge is we don't have any basis to have the M A C I, the area that it is, because we couldn't serve that in six hundred years.
Yeah.
So that's where it was drawing it in.
You don't wanna pump water up to sixty three hundred feet and for a subdivision, top of Baldi.
Amy, the line that you're going on is kind of gonna guide what is the center. For, right, correct?
Yeah, that's the dotted line.
All right, well, I appreciate the discussion, maybe I'll just withdraw that suggestion and. We'll take it when when the county's ready. I I like the tentative or proposed language, though, if we could potentially add that in. Right, cuz it's, this isn't it, we know that.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not a firm line in the sand.
Sorry to derail you there, Marion.
Oh, no, this was great, thanks for the the discussion. Ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, chapter five, housing and neighborhoods. This has a, of course, it was, we used the Leland Report, the Housing and Economic Analysis. To help us understand the the context of the housing challenges in Sandpoint. Um, and we have added a new goal and a focus on housing affordability specifically. Um, so the housing variety, existing neighborhoods and new neighborhoods are all generally pulled from the last plan. We've tweaked and made them more robust, but the housing affordability goal is a new one. And something that we've heard since two thousand nineteen, I'm sure you've heard it before then, but um certainly. Uh, affordability is on everyone's mind.
Um, just comment on that, I I wonder if it's um. Yeah, I'm just thinking housing quality, right, like efficiency for, you know, building performance. Um, you know, o- open space. Um, I mean, I I appreciate, I mean, I guess charm and comfort of Sandpoint's existing neighborhoods. You know, it's almost there, but. I would like to see a a quality housing a as a goal, something, um, I'm not sure what the language is, but. I think, you know, we we wanna, we want buildings that are well insulated and, you know, have good. Passive solar and air and space and, you know. Don't we think that that's important? Anyone, invite anyone's feedback on that? Picking up the standards language is, I mean, that's the trick, right? I would agree of of highlighting quality, but. The subjective nature of quality, I mean, that's a lot of what we ran into around this, it's just kind of the subjective nature of the language. I think it'd be an interesting exercise to try to pin down some language around it. Yeah.
I will mention too, like in coming up in chapter eleven, it does mention increased energy efficiency as well as sustainable development. Within which that might fall, without specifically mentioning some of those things. I don't know if this is the place to specifically mention that solar power, for example.
And a lot of that's already, you know, required under building code anyway, so it's. But um, I don't know, seemed worth mentioning under goals, but.
Yeah, I mean, each. Question here, are we, are we gonna come back and ask or share thoughts on specific goals? We're just doing a a chapter by chapter overview right now, cuz I do have some comments about this, but I think they're more appropriate for later.
Okay.
Yeah, and and just a comment, these goals are a higher level goal, there's sub goals to each one of these that address some of those.
Okay, aspects. Thanks, man. All right, Marion.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, we have, so this is, this is just a high level, um, uh. Summary of the goals, uh, but you're right, we have objectives that fall under each of these, so I think some of the specifics you'll find. Hopefully, uh, all in the the objectives as written, um, I'm just looking, taking a quick look at it now. And and under goal three, existing neighborhoods, we have some objectives uh that touch on. Um, you know, architectural integrity or historical architectural integrity, um. Making sure we we have tree canopies in the neighborhood, um, and. You know, some of the walkability aspects of what these neighborhoods uh look like, so if you want, we can also pull up the the plan later. After I finish my overview and and if there are specific sections we need to really dig into, and I'd be happy to put that up on screen.
Thanks.
Multi model transportation, again, did pull heavily from the two thousand twenty one multi model transportation plan. Um, and I will note that first half of the planning process was done in tandem with that plan. Um, so we had some um joint events and processes early on in the process. Uh, with the hopes that we can align transportation and land use pretty, pretty closely. Um, so, you know, of course, that timing didn't quite work out uh with the pause with the comprehensive plan, but. Um, what we've done is tried to pull in the those high level goals from that transportation plan and reflect them here. Um, as appropriate. Parks, Recreation and Trails also pulled heavily from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Um, and and integrates the recommendations there, the. The difference, and you'll see the the stark difference between this level of goals and these level of goals from the transportation chapter. Um, is simply a uh reflection of how the level of detail that the Parks and Recreation Trails Plan went into. Um, they they did a little bit more site plan analysis that wasn't so easily translated into citywide. Um, high level goals and and policies. Not to say that that um. That this doesn't encompass uh the direction that we've heard as well. Chapter eight, Public Facility Services and Utilities, this is um kind of a reworking of that chapter. We added a goal about solid waste management, added a goal about public health and access to health resources. And we added a goal about responsive government and representative city engagement, or civic engagement, I should say. Uh, we also de, uh, we separated to um, or I guess the educational. Goal from the two thousand nine plan to two separate educational goals here, just to um. To be a little bit more specific about uh the direction, uh, one is about long range planning with partners. Um, particularly with school districts, the other is about a different or it might more diverse range of educational opportunities. That includes lifelong learning and might be more extended into um the uh, the, you know, community. Um, college and the library facilities, that type of thing, a little bit more broader in touch. Um, and I guess also we split the health and safety goal into two to focus on uh safety by design or crime prevention as well. So goal five and six were decoupled as well. Jobs and Economic Development Chapter, uh, these four are largely the same, I guess. Um, but but tweaked in in a sense, the downtown downtown vitality goal was pulled from a different chapter, actually. It was in the community character chapter, I believe, originally. Um, we also had a a stronger focus on a resilient year round economy to respond to the seasonal workforce needs. And we integrated innovation a little bit more clearly, um, to reflect the the current talent, local entrepreneur. Uh, culture here, um, so that those are the major changes on this chapter, but of course, also integrating. The data from that uh Leland Report, the Housing and Economic Analysis. The Airport Facilities Chapter was updated in two thousand nineteen, that was that first uh update that we did, and. Since then, we have not made substantive changes to that that chapter. Uh, I will say we tweaked the the structure of the goals to be more consistent across the board. With how we phrase those statements, uh, but the content, uh, the there there were no substantive changes, I should say. To this chapter. The final topic specific chapter, Natural Resources and Hazards. Um, is expanded, so we we expanded the resource protection goal into three to be resource stewardship, water resources. And then a third touching on light, air and noise po- pollution. Um, we've also integrated more energy conservation sustainability standards, um, the new dark sky direction. That we've uh, we've heard and um, that recognizes more strongly the ecological importance of watershed and other riparian areas. Uh, I will say, we've also added an objective here under the uh water resource goal. To reflect a direction um for water uh conservation as well. So the last and final chapter implementation, this chapter has really been pared back. Uh, from what is included in the two thousand nine plan, and this is intended to make the implementation of the plan. A little bit more useful by staff, um, so the information. Of each of the implementation strategies that had been included, it was a table in in this this chapter. That has been moved to Appendix A, uh, to really be a working document that staff can refer to and update and. And tweak and, um, you know, use as a kind of a work plan for them, for their departments. Um, and not be burdened by having to update uh kind of a chapter of of the comprehensive plan. So what is included is plan management, what what types of amendments you can do. The criteria you would want to use to um. To gauge whether an amendment would be necessary or beneficial. Development review and consistency, just to understand uh how to use the plan in terms of uh the development review process. And then we do have a quick understanding of implementation projects and programs, mostly to direct you to the the implementation. Um, Appendix A, uh, but these are the the types of. Strategies or approaches that we would include in that Appendix A, so zoning code updates, supporting plans or studies that are necessary. Programs, either new or um existing programs and services. Capital projects and investments, partnerships and agreements, so the ACI negotiation and um. Intergovernmental agreement agreement with the county would fall under that partnership and agreements category, and then new funding mechanisms. So that kind of concludes my overview of the of the plan. Um, if you'd like, I can also pull up the the appendices, if you'd like to go into detail about uh what's included in those. Uh, implementation strategies in Appendix A or um, of course, any of those other ones, we can, we can pull up for conversation as well.
Well, where does everybody wanna go, do we wanna drill down a little bit and. Uh, objectives in each chapter, or what what did you have planned for us next, Amy?
Um, it's really what what where's council's question or concern areas, um, and just. Sounded like Council Walker had some specific.
A lot of it's just stuff I'd be happy to give you. That, you know, recommended language, maybe I should, I mean, I'm sure we probably run some of it by this group, just a a couple areas. But also, I mean, I I read like all hundred and forty pages and, you know, just took some notes for you, so. I'm gonna hand this to you and give you a digital copy later, but there are probably some things that I'm not the only one, I'm sure, who wants to talk about specific things in here. So, let's go, let's go. Should I start? Are other people gonna share some?
You got through the grammar edits and whatnot, but.
Yeah.
And anything substantive that you.
There's a couple things, so one, um, that uh page thirty six, let me. Share what chapter that is, I should have written the chapter down. The Neighborhoods Program, weird, it's, oh, in the urban forest chapter, we talked about the 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 Neighborhoods Program. And I I just wondered, is that actually a thing that we do anymore, is that, did that get carried over from the old comp plan and not taken out like it should have been?
Well, we we put it in there as something that has been used, um, but our focus really was on. Implementing the forestry, urban forest management master plan. And what comes out of that, you know, as we go through implementation of that document, what may come out of it? You know, is there a a different program that comes out of it? Um, or is there other funding that we use to um support urban forestry? Uh, but we just thought, I, we've mentioned it more as a historical element that. It it is not active currently.
Okay, thanks for that. Um, under relevant plans and studies on page thirteen, I noticed the watershed management plan was not listed on there. Should should that be, it, we have the multimodal plan, arts, culture, store, preservation, parks and rec. But the watershed management, which is referenced throughout the document. But Watershed Management Plan, which is referenced throughout the document, is not listed.
Okay, so just have it as a link right with all those other.
Seems like it's an important one. And and within that plan, of course, is the soon to be adopted rec plan, so I would include that. As part of the Watershed Management Plan.
Right, so the the rec plan will be in a appendix to the overall watershed. And then we also say we're going to add an appendix for the watershed recreation plan as well.
Maybe I just want to run this by everybody, page sixteen says. That the natural features and recreations surrounding Sandpoint attract ten thousand visitors a year to the area. And I think there might be a zero missing there. Just because Schweitzer on a busy day gets seven thousand people. And, you know, the festival Sandpoint brings four thousand people, so. I thought we might want to place a little bit more emphasis on the role of recreation and the surrounding areas, the lakes and the mountains. And the impact that they have on visitor numbers in Sandpoint. So that was on page sixteen, I think it might have just been a typo, but I thought maybe somebody at the city thinks we only have ten thousand people here visiting us.
Or maybe it's tens of thousands.
Tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands. But Schweitzer gets about two hundred thousand visitors a year, so that alone would be. You know, quite a bit larger than the ten thousand in in the plan.
Yeah, because there are years that we get ten thousand people coming through the Chamber Visitor Center throughout the summer and and fall, so.
Again, I'm not going to talk about all these, but one that I I I thought might we want to discuss as a group is page fifty two. Goal one D under, this is housing. Encourage the provision of housing above ground floor retail in downtown mixed use areas. I have heard the mayor use the term economic vitality when describing the intent or justification for this. And I've also heard in the last couple of years, his proposals have come forward to do this, to implement this, it's it's not been the kind of housing I think was intended when we. Use this language in in the past. So I wondered if we as a group thought maybe we should explicitly state our intent for housing above retail downtown. Because what we we've seen in in proposals coming forward is more, you know, the luxury condo. Type development, not to say that that shouldn't be allowed, but if this is an aspirational document, do we want to clarify what the purpose and intent of? Housing above retail downtown in a mixed use areas is, like, why why do we want to? Encourage that in our comp plan, are we trying to encourage, you know, two million dollar condos that are used for three weeks a year? Or are we trying to encourage different type of housing? Using some of that space downtown.
Both and.
Or are we encouraging density in the downtown area? Versus out in the out our, you know, once we get out of the downtown corridor, right? And maybe specifically defining that as well, because I I get your point wholeheartedly.
We do have like the beginning of every chapter has a little intent statement, and I just wondered if there was. If we wanted to clarify the intent of why we are encouraging more residential density downtown.
Do you think it would be any meaningful if it said something like the intent of this is the people who. Work in downtown can live in downtown?
I mean, really, like, I I I that that would be great, but that's seems.
It's not that, but it just it shows the intent, whether or not it's it certainly is not quotable, not enforceable.
Or not, I mean, to say like the people working downtown, a lot of people working downtown are in the service sector, right? They're probably not going to be earning wages, that's not allowed them to rent or buy a place above a downtown business. Unless it's an old, an old building that has, you know, a small old apartment above it. But we're talking about like new development downtown types of housing, and of course, the market's going to dictate what type of housing goes in above commercial downtown. And right now that is more likely to be luxury condos, but if we're putting that in our plan. I think most of us agree that the intent is like people to live in. Not an Airbnb or a rich out of towners vacation property that gets used for a couple of weeks a year. Because that, because the mayor's always used the term economic vitality when talking about upstairs residential downtown. Those vacation homes don't provide quite the economic vitality that a place that some people might live in would. And I'm not necessarily saying workforce housing, that's that's kind of, there's a lot in between, right? So just for us to consider, like, why do we have that in here? What is our intent of putting that in here?
What is the statement that you would come up with?
Something related to economic vitality and like people living downtown, I don't, I haven't wordsmithed it yet, but. Not to say that we're gonna, there won't be, I I don't, I'm not proposing to put codes that say you can't do, you know, vacation rentals downtown, but. We might put language in our comp plan that articulates our intent behind this.
Will it be with the emphasis on year round? But, I mean, I just play devil's advocate. If I were a business downtown, I might rather have that transient population that's going to be buying my t-shirts. My shoes, my touristy kind of things. So having that turnover population actually adds to economic vitality as well.
But they don't have to store all their boats and RVs and bicycles and kayaks and everything, you know. They probably have one on their truck and that's about it, right? And then the other thing is, you know, we have one of the most, maybe the most restrictive short term rental ordinance in the state. And we we skated by, avoided court so far, I think largely because. We allow unrestricted short term rentals in the downtown, in the commercial zones, right? So it's a good thing because, you know, it's very, very restrictive in the residential areas, I think that's great for us, it's great for our neighborhoods. And but we were trying to drive that into the downtown or into the commercial areas because. To Amy's point, I think she's absolutely right, it absolutely drives economic vitality. That and traffic a place to go.
Like, but but that what you're saying would be good language here, like the intent behind this is economic vitality.
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying, but the other thing I would add is that when you're looking at a development project downtown, it's the blend that. You you want to have both and, right? And it's the short term rentals that actually make workforce housing affordable, because if you've got a project with, you know. Thirty or forty units, and if you've got, you know, twenty five percent of those or thirty five percent of those that are short term rentals. That are, you know, bringing a much higher, you know, rate even above a market rate, right? Than what you would get if you were just long term renting that unit. And that that extra return on investment allows you to reduce the rent on those other, so. To have that flexibility is is good for economic vitality, it's good for affordability and it's good for. Just a diversity for our social environment, right? Because you've got a mix of different kinds of people in a in a development, which is a good thing too, so rather than, you know, a homogenous group of people. So, but I hear your point that, you know, we could be more, you know, descriptive what we're.
Well, I think encouraging it, you know, like a lower cost housing. Might change the perception of some from it's only for high end. Because we don't have, I'm I'm not aware of it, because I've never seen one, but we don't have youth hostels and it's certainly that'd be a tough sell. For a developer to build a youth hostel, but, you know, things like that, we don't have. So I do like the idea of encouraging it, you know, maybe specific language to it might bring in. Or attract a different kind of developer that can actually do it at cost, make money, profit from doing it and turn people through it.
Something I think we could explicitly say on page seventy eight, which is, the goal is to inspire innovation and cooperation. I believe this is in the multimodal transportation chapter. Objective E says continue to reevaluate and adapt to rapidly changing technology advances such as electric powered and self driving vehicles and e-bikes. I'm thinking back to Wayne's City Council Campaign, we talked about micro mobility devices and scooters, but that's actually something a little different. We, I I think this is a really big one that we're probably not emphasizing enough, which is the kind of changing nature of transportation. And not that everybody gets to be riding hoverboards or self driving cars, but electric vehicles really are. Coming onto the market faster and faster, and of course, when gas prices fall by a dollar, that slows down, but. The trend has been moved towards electric vehicles and I I think it might be worth emphasizing the need to. Encourage or look for partners to invest in electric vehicle infrastructure in Sandpoint. Our our two little cables down at Farming or. Jeff Jones Square are not modern high speed electrical vehicle chargers, they take eight or nine hours to charge a car, but. Right now, Taylor and Sons has invested in the first, the first in Bonner County, the only in Bonner County, like actual high speed vehicle charging station. It was being installed today when I drove by. There are tons like millions of dollars of incentives right now for cities and. Gas stations or other partners to to get free upfront dollars for the installation of high speed vehicle chargers. And right now, the closest ones in Bonner's very, because they got a two hundred thousand dollar state grant to put it in, and now they're making money off of it by. Selling the electricity and the parking space, so something we might aspire towards is like, something more explicit about. Accommodating electric vehicle.
Well, I was even thinking that the chamber parking lot that's owned by the city. It'd be a good space.
That would be a good spaces, but what one thing you need is connected, like pedestrian, because well, people plug in, they gotta be able to walk.
See, and that would be great too, because then I could actually ride my bike to work rather than being afraid to be.
Anyway, I don't know if it bails things that, and perhaps a more explicit emphasis on EV. Infrastructure.
I certainly agree with you and think it would be in our discussions earlier, we'd had that discussion and at that point we were encouraged to keep it out. Because they weren't certain that the infrastructure was supporting of a a large. Scale increase in the amount of electrical charging stations that could be here. But it still could be an aspirational thing, given the infrastructure's there or not. Well, if if we say we want this to be, then perhaps the infrastructure will come along to assist it. I know there were some cases brought up where other communities had done that and it overwhelmed their system, because they kind of did too much too fast. Because if everybody plugs in at the same time, it's a huge drain on the electric grid, on the local grid. Yeah, if it's fact, if it's a high speed charger and and you got a lot of them in town and everybody plugs in at the same time, there can be unintended consequences. So, I like the idea, but.
You know, this is a twenty year plan and I think GM has said by twenty thirty five, they'll manufacture zero new gas vehicles.
Some are sooner than that.
Hundred percent electric within twelve years or now, so if we're not thinking about how we're going to accommodate travelers. Who are going to be, who will be driving electric cars in ten years. It's, you know, I know, you know, Paul Chevron could do it themselves, but if the city were here like as a partner. Because a lot of these grants require, you know, local government participation to to be eligible. So, something to put in there, maybe.
I mean, yeah, as far as what we're doing here tonight, we're shopping it, I mean, if we're in agreement, it sounds to me like that's something we would like to see the wording, whatever that wording is. Before this goes out to the public.
And Jason, just going back, you said page seventy eight, is that under goal four?
I'm on PDF page seventy eight, sorry, I I I'm. In the document, it's page seventy two, sorry, I I'm looking at my, because I can jump around on PDF more easily than looking at the page numbers at the bottom. So it's it's goal E on page seventy two of the document, PDF page seventy.
Yeah, I think that's a great aspirational statement, Jason. I I recall it was legislative session that there was a bill. Another preemptive bill by the state legislature where they. Shut down municipalities' ability to require infrastructure in new development, so. But as an aspirational statement, I think it's, that's good.
I've got more, but I'd like to hear from a lot of people.
I have a comment on the connectivity of the EV charging. So the fast chargers are more connectivity for travelers over longer distance. So the high speed is debatable if it's, if it's a need ever. Because most people charge at home at night and they don't use up all their charge during the day, so. The the need to fill up is for people who travel like from Seattle to San Point to Montana. So, the local public to use it is is probably very low. Especially since the cost could be more to actually charge high, high speed. The co, the infrastructure to install a station is like thirty thousand dollars or or two.
At least.
And you need the power behind that, it's not just like a two twenty or two forty or. It's a four eighty volt, so it's like three phase power, which could be a bigger issue than the actual cost. So the demand will happen for sure, like it's it's already in motion, it's already gonna be here, but. There's already talk of like even higher speed chargers, like the generation four stuff, so. I agree that it should be in the document, but being specific about what it is in two years, that's going to be good. I think there's still a lot to be worked out as far as electric vehicles charging. Like, demand, because I think we've seen, like, I live a few blocks away from the one downtown that's very rarely used. From what I see, it does get used, but.
Most, I I know people use it and they're mostly people who live in the county and work in town, so they plug it in while they're at work and get a free charge. Because we don't charge for that, the the chargers that I'm talking about would not be free, they'd be like a gas machine, go and plug in for twenty five minutes, go get a coffee, come back and then you drive home. But you've paid forty five, fifty bucks to charge your car. And that, you're right, it's for people who are passing through.
But that is. Free market, private, private business is probably going to be on top of that.
A lot of what's in this plan is free market private business, it's just how is the silly city going to be involved and incentivize or partner?
Yeah, the power source is probably the bigger issue as far as having having ability to have three phase. Hours is, if you can't have that, then you won't have the. But you're right, I think there's eighty five percent grants.
And it really wouldn't be just people passing through, it would be people making decisions to come here for that reason. I live in Seattle and I I want to take a weekend somewhere, okay, where can I drive my Tesla? And know that that I can charge it while I'm there, so I certainly could be a an economic benefit to the community as well, not just. Road, cross country trips or anything, but people making choices about where they're gonna.
Hotels may have to make that investment as well.
You would think.
The hotels in Hondra all have vehicle charging, but they're overnight chargers, they're for guests only basically, and it'll take eight hours to charge your car.
Well, see, then they stay and spend more money.
We got one down at the Best Western and it's the same three or four locals that use it and leave it there for six hours. And now that's a city parking lot, we don't make any money on it, we leave the parking space for our employee. And I can hear Molly O'Reilly as well, too, in my, the back of my head, right? And a lot of her comments throughout this whole thing, are we teaching people to come downtown by mode of walking, biking, cycle? Whatever it is, right? You know, everything we've got in here, despite our multimodal, is very auto centric, right? And when we include that as well, too, I think, I I I am of the opinion, if you are going to include it, make sure that we're charging for it. And the city's getting something back for that space, especially with those high speed chargers. But I do think she always makes a great point, though, is how auto centric we are for such a walking community. And for our multimodal plan, right, and are we inviting automobiles to come down there? Or are we inviting people to walk from their doorstep down to the outdoor recreation and the economic vitality that comes with downtown? Or that could come with downtown?
Well, and that's a culture shift, I think it's a generational culture shift, you know, once we get rid of the boomers. I think, and you know, we have more forward thinking generations saying, I'm only going to drive electric cars. I think that's really a huge culture shift to try and, because in America, we're just not going to give up our cars, I mean, you know, driving. Because we're basically lazy.
There is a huge increase, though, in bicycle traffic, both both pedal and electric. And I don't know if that's in there specifically either, providing adequate parking space for that sort of thing. Because I know a couple of years ago, that seemed to be a real concern, people wouldn't bike because it wasn't a safe place to keep that bike. But I think that's changed, there seems to be a lot more public bike parking now than there was a couple of years.
Creative, but yeah.
Small treats, the small treats, gotta get that chain around it.
In the implementation table, there's the discussion about the downtown parking and a constructing a parking structure as part of a public private partnerships. Bicycle parking, EV charging and all those things should be considered in that element.
That's actually a really good point, because that centrally hubs some of that service into double and triple dip in those partnerships and be able to. So. Councilman Walker made a really good point a few meetings prior and it was. I'll paraphrase, transportation by a thousand cats. We have so many varieties that everybody will choose their own way to do things. Now that is fine, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with everybody having their free choice. It is kind of up to us as a city to try to funnel things in and not expedite things, but to make things more efficient and economic and not. Hazardly mix user groups. Uh, so that I drive for a living, I see a lot of misbehavior. And the e-bikes, the bikes bikes, the people walking, uh, people's cars, just how they behave. It is up to us and it might be getting a little off topic, but it's up to us to. Uh, not make choices for other people, but to funnel in the safest, most efficient way. And that parking garage is, I, I believe that to be a, a focal point and a great place for a, a variety of different charging as well as parking. So I'm glad that you brought that up and that's in here.
Um, does anyone else on the council have any other? Questions or comments or topics that you'd like to discuss in more detail?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll run this by the group a little bit. Is the education portion of this? Um, I know when we were working on the, what, twenty oh nine comp plan. I, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out what the dates were. Did we get NIC moved prior to the comp plan? From the Bonner Mall to the old middle school on Euclid prior to the complaint, or did that come after?
Right after.
It was after, I remember, right? And I remembered quite the discussion of it and we were excited. We thought being the satellite campus, that we were going to find all these employees and we were gonna take our high school kids and move them through that. And they would go locally, right? And it never really worked out. I, I don't know if it worked out the way that we thought it was going to. And I think if you talked to Quest and some of our airport folks. They'd say the same thing and they would hire some of these kids that got out of the NIC program. Uh, they'd work there for a short amount of time and then head to Coeur d'Alene and south of here for bigger opportunities. We have talked a number of time of culinary programs. We're in the same boat with hospitality, food and beverage. These folks go down to Coeur d'Alene for a six-month course. It's relatively cheap. Their placement is Coeur d'Alene all the way to Spokane and even to Seattle after that. And I think somebody brought it up here when we were discussing the, they, oh, it was Deb, right? She's talking about the elementary school and the ACI. But uh, what about maybe broadening or, you know, when you look back through this appendix here and a lot of the engagement that we had. There, there is a lot of education and education opportunity in here. And maybe our goals under those two, the education bullets, right, are to bring some satellite campuses up. The U of I's, the Boise States, the Idaho States. Um, and where we can be a hub and stop losing that south of us to the higher density areas. And potentially keep, if our kids aren't leaving the community because they were already born and raised in paradise. How do we keep them and funnel them through? We've got the great technology companies. You've got Coachava, we've got the aerospace industry. We have such a diverse icon, uh, economy where. Uh, do we vision ourselves as an educational hub in the future as well to support these innovative industries? And keep our economy as diverse it is, as it is.
Well, I remember I was on a committee that we, it had to go before the voters. Was that to create a university district or? What, what's that, you know?
Yeah.
Because we had to put it on the ballot and I think at that point, because that's what we wanted to do. And I think that the powers that be, I don't know who it was, decided that they didn't think the voters would vote for it. So I think that, and that was NIC's issue is that they want to expand, but they can't until we create this.
Yeah, just. There was a, a little bit of internal friction with NIC because. We really need their endorsement to do that, because we're, we're within their district. Um, and it, it wasn't necessarily advantageous for them to do so, so that, that's kind of where we ran into the rub. When we tried this seven years ago.
Well, maybe that's the opportunity. I think when Governor Otter was in, there was a big push, when, when students weren't matriculating to college, right? There's a big push for Vo-Tech, right? And as the economy got better, that message stopped going out as much, at least through the state. And now we're seeing kind of a big push into STEM and into vocational school as well too, and Rotary is pushing and Superintendent Meyer is pushing for Vo-Tech. And we've got a great program in Coeur d'Alene. But eventually somewhere in our visioning, we need to, I, I, I think we gotta make sure that we're protecting ourself and our community. From our, our kiddos, you know, and our intelligence leaving the community and heading down to the higher density areas. When I think a lot of business owners, small, medium and large, would take those, take those students and foster that. Or pump money into some sort of a educational program. Uh, that has some criteria that will keep them here. So I, I guess I would just ask the group to chat about it, think about it. And do we, do we need to bring more education in here? Uh, in terms of our visioning and our planning or uh, as we move forward? Or is that something that we do somewhere else?
Well, we have, um, there's goal three, education lifelong learning. And there's an objective B of encourage educational institutions to develop programs that will result in local employment opportunities for graduates. And then also assist in the recruitment of local higher education and career training institutions. But those could certainly be more specific.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's in there, it's in there. I guess I would just tax this body for maybe we need to. Uh, further investigate. And, and where that goes and maybe make that a little bit of a larger priority for the community.
Yeah, I can agree with that. Go ahead, sir. I agree with that statement. And I'm glad that it's in here. I just don't know how to get. If, if I could handcuff our kids and help them with the golden parachute to be able to stay in Sandpoint and. Live, work, recreate, educate and all that to, to stay here. So I, I believe this place to be the most attractive around. However. Coeur d'Alene is right down the street and, you know, housing is this and hours are this and pay is this and then Spokane is just that much further. So how do we get that to be more incentivized other than us just saying it and then living that?
Well, it, it is happening. There are local groups like Kinnick's Land Trust that does a lot of, you know, outdoor-based education. The University of Idaho has the SOAC. Uh, the old um, Organic Agriculture Center, two weeks from now, they're hosting their. Uh, drone camp for, for local middle schoolers, free camp sponsored by the University of Idaho with a very large grant from NASA. I mean, this stuff is happening, by the way, you're all invited to the barbecue on the last day of that. Getting emails from me. Um, yeah, so there are local champions that are doing a lot of that stuff. And the city, that's not in the city Sandpoint, but.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's really cool that we're lucky to have groups doing that sort of work here. I, I do think that the objectives that Amy pointed out there are, are pretty robust. Yeah, it really gives us, you know, permission to look for those relationships and foster those. Those sort of opportunities.
And it was very much Chairman Hastings was really.
Amy, I, I wonder within the implementation plan, it's more specific to North Idaho College. I wonder if we should broaden that. We should.
It just mentioned.
It just mentioned. I mean, U of I's here. They're egg center, so.
And SOAC is within the area of city impact, so it's very feasible. You know, that's gonna be our likely area for, you know. First round of expansion probably, so it makes sense to. Broaden that, I think that's a great suggestion. Any other comments or questions or?
I think I would go changing gears entirely. Um, and I don't know where it would fall, if it'd be in Parks and Rec, but kind of combining this together with um. Uh, area of city impact. When we look at Sandpoint, it's fairly saturated in its build-out. We don't have much more space. Um, with the objective of both elementary school or of something else, but also even just increased parkland. I'm wondering if there should be language that says we would look at partnership with the county. My understanding is the city cannot own. Parkland outside of its border. Is that accurate? I, I remember hearing that somewhere. But, but that, because that would be my first choice, is can the city look at buying land not in the city limits for the purposes of Parks and Recreation? Uh, and if that's not a possibility, is that something we want to look at partnering with the county to increase park and recreation land?
Yeah, and, and we can buy land outside of the city, so the um, the watershed is. Five thousand acres almost. Four thousand, um, and then originally the wastewater, the, the Baldi Disc Golf Course was originally outside of the city. And then we annexed it in. Um, so yeah, we, we can do that, but, but no, that's, that's a great aspiration to. You know, want to maintain as, as the city continues to grow and certainly as it ex- expands outward that we are bringing in new. Uh, acreage into the park system to, you know.
Can put the best we can accomplish that, I've, you know, I said.
The Parks Plan had partnering with school districts and looking at utilizing assets like that as parks. Because they're not being utilized oftentimes outside of school hours. Amy, you probably want to refer back to the Parks Plan on there. I don't think it had within. Our current boundaries that we needed additional parks.
Well, there, there was that, what was it?
Fourteen acres.
Fourteen acres, yeah.
Fourteen acres is the number that stood out.
Yeah.
For, based on our, what our comp plan in two thousand nine said, we should be providing per capita. I think it by three, four years ago, we had estimated we needed additional fourteen acres of, of park space. I, but commenting on that, John, um, I was very happy to see the language around parks. In recreation and open spaces in here. Um, you know, we've, we've talked over the years about broadening the vision of Parks and Rec to include, you know. The watershed specifically, but possibly other open spaces that the Baldi property's been talked about before. That's already an open space within city limits. It's not an official park. Um, but there, there was uh, under the intent, and I have some, some language I, I'd share, I want to share with you, but. Early on in the parks in recreation chapter, it mentions open spaces, but then under the intent, it doesn't mention open spaces. So I have some suggested language that I'll, I'll share with you. Um, just under intent to make sure we uh, recognize that open spaces are part of our vision for recreation in, in Sandpoint as well. Um, and I, I have to share one that Deb asked me to share. If you don't mind, since she's not here. Page seventy-two, I didn't, uh, this one didn't jump out to me, but um, when she mentioned it, sorry, PDF page seventy-two. Let me find out what document page that is. Um, that is page sixty-six in the document. I think we're in the multimodal transportation chapter. Um, the second paragraph on the page talks about the east-west route through downtown. Uh, are heavily traveled and making sure. Uh, they are efficient and safe is critical to keeping the city moving. Recommended improvements include signalization and improving the intersections of First Avenue and Superior Street. First Avenue at Pine Street and re- relocated the traffic signal from Fifth and Church to Fifth and Pine. Deb's concern was that we're calling out like specific locations of stoplights in our comp plan. Um, during the east-west connection conversation that just wrapped up a couple of months ago. Uh, including the Reader Town Hall, the public workshops that the city had. A lot of um, public. Comments, signal, uh, focused on the, the, the superior and first intersection as well. And while our multimodal plan currently includes uh, the concept for a stoplight there. I'm afraid that if we put that in our complaint specifically, like we're saying, oh, we're aspiring to put a stoplight at First and Superior, I heard a lot of opposition to that. So I, I recommend possibly taking out the locations of specific stoplights. On the east-west corridor in our comp plan. I mean, Deb would recommend that and I, I concur. It was, it was her, her suggestion. So we don't really do that elsewhere in the plan. We're talking about like specific intersection configurations. And that one just seemed to be a little, because that's already one that we've heard pushback on is.
Right.
The stoplight at First and Superior in particular, and versions in Pine. So. Perhaps take out that reference.
A more general statement like.
Yeah, just focusing on.
Proving intersection.
Yeah, intersection flow and how we can maximize.
Yeah.
And earlier, uh, there was a section on truck routes as well. Um, it, I, I, I think the language sitting here is totally fine, but um, again, like. We've been, we started to hear some questioning and pushback about the proposed uh, re-designating Pine as a truck route. So that kind of goes with this as well, like the stoplight is very much like a concept that would support turning Pine Street back into a truck route. So while that's currently in our multimodal plan, that's, it doesn't seem like it's a project we're undertaking immediately. So to put it here in a twenty-year document.
Right, the multimodal could be amended before.
Right.
This gets amended, so.
I have a thought, um. Under public facilities, services and utilities. After eight, I think page ninety-two of the document. Trying to find it myself. Just looking under goals and objectives.
Document page ninety-two or PDF page ninety-two?
Uh, document, uh, page ninety-two, PDF page ninety-seven, go on utilities and infrastructure. And I'm thinking about, um. And, and I don't know that if this even goes here, but the, the examples that I'm thinking of are specific to utilities. Um, but I'm thinking um, in terms of public facilities, um, efficient use of resources. And where possible, um. Trying to accomplish multiple goals or objectives. With uh, resources at hand. And so specifically, I'm, I'm thinking about, um. Council is gonna have a proposal for a housing authority coming before you here next month. And, and one of the. One of the goals that I would like to propose for the housing authority is, is. Uh, for the city to be able to leverage existing uh, land resources that are underutilized. Uh, particularly, and I can think of three properties right now that are owned by the city utility, wastewater and water utilities. Where it's mostly vacant land. So for example, you have the Mickinick Trailhead. You have a water tank there. Um, that takes up, you know, less than an acre of land on a twenty-acre parcel. And of course, the trailhead's there as well, that takes up about less than an acre also. Um, so you've got, you know, beautiful trailhead right on the edge of city, you know, less than a quarter mile from our uh, utility hookups. And um, that would be a great opportunity for um, a. Uh, public-private partnership there, for instance, with a developer that could uh, provide affordable or workforce housing there. Um, and um, and that would be a way for the city to leverage resources that already has, that aren't gonna. We're not gonna ever sell that land, we're not gonna ever do anything else there than have that tank there, right? We might one day add another tank there at most, right? Um, we might expand our parking a little bit, because Mickinick gets a lot of use, but that's the kind of thing where, you know, we've got an incredible resource there. Or there could be other, there could be a, a, a park amenities there other than simply the trailhead, like I was thinking. Um, you know, a bike, uh, you know, train park or something like that. It would be a great spot for something like that. So, um, but because it's owned by the utility, we have this, you know, we kind of treat it like, oh, it's utility, so we can't touch it, right? The, the rare exception, the one exception that we have is, well, we have two exceptions right now. There's. Mickinick Trailhead recreational use and over at the Baldi, Baldi Foot Disc Golf Course, we have Baldi Foot. Um, but, but I would like to see more of that kind of um, intermixed use, where we're, we're taking an asset that we already have. And we're just getting more out of it, right? Doesn't cost us anything. Um, but we're getting more of what we want out of, you know, out of our land use, whether it's parks and open space, recreation, whether it's housing affordability. You know, whatever, so um, I think that, that kind of aspirational uh. You know. Visionary idea, I would like to see explicit um, in here somewhere. And, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly where that would be. It could include a component of that and under. Uh, the utilities uh, section, because we do have a lot of assets there under utilities. And I think specific to that category, I think we can get, get a lot of mileage there, but it, but maybe that's a more general. You know, kind of aspirational statement about how we should try to think. Um, about, you know, using our land and resources more efficiently across the board. So that we can accomplish as many of our um, goals and, and different uh, needs a- as possible with what we have.
I already got a name for your development. Mickinick Manors.
Stop thinking.
This, it's kind of a maximize use of public land for broader purposes or?
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty good.
Multi-use of city-owned land.
Yeah.
Um, so that it wouldn't have to be if it's not limited utilities. It could be used for parks, it could be used for housing, it could be used for other. not limited utilities. It could be used for parks. It could be used for housing. It could be used for other things. Multiple city-owned land.
So can the housing, can a housing authority buy that land to make the rate pay and toll and then follow that way?
Uh, it's good, but it doesn't have any money.
Right, but.
Details.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, no, the way that that would probably work is it would be a long-term land lease, like, like we have, you know, the hospital has a ninety-nine year lease, you know, the city owns the property where the uh emergency room is, right? It's a ninety-nine year lease. They pay a dollar a year or whatever.
Right.
Um, well, that's valuable land, but because it's, we all recognize the public benefit of having an ER downtown, right? Then, you know, we, we say that's fine. Same thing with the senior center, right? We, we charge what? I think a dollar a year or something for the senior center. City owns that property, okay? Um, there, I don't know if it's a ninety-nine or a fifty-year they're on there. Um, lots of examples. Another one off of Boyer, the city owns about fifteen acres where the light house, those, those blue kind of industrial buildings on the, the east side of Boyer as you're going out towards North Boyer.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
What's that? Sorry. By the way, it's not available. But uh that, that's actually, that was a fifty-year and that's actually coming up. I think it's thirty-three.
Yeah, and we're gonna relocate our stuff over there. And the Baldi extension goes through there.
Yeah.
So the consolidating facilities, even with housing, even for us in the Parks and Rec master plan and our shop master plan was to get our facilities consolidated so that we're more efficient across our groups too. So that's what was planned there.
Well, and that property has so much potential for things that the city could use in the future. Especially after it, well, while it continues to expand. Be a great conversation to have someday because I'm pretty knowledgeable about that property. Um, you know, we use, we rent the big building, we rent the yard in the back that the um eventual connector is going to go through. And we've been there for twenty-two years.
Yeah. And, you know, fingers crossed, but, you know, we may also end up with the Daher property there. I'm, I'm hopeful in, in, you know, in the near future where um, it's certainly a possibility. So that's the ten acres across the street that's um been a brownfields.
Oh, the old pole yard?
Yeah, the old pole.
Okay, when you said Daher, threw me for a minute.
Yeah.
Was that?
You told me the aircraft company.
No, no.
It's all.
Sorry, I meant Donaher, sorry.
Yeah.
It's the lot that's like right in front of the actual lighthouse plant between Boyer and what would be Ella.
Are they doing some remediation right now?
They are, yeah.
Yep.
That's big anyway. Fourteen acres upfront there.
Okay.
Um, on that, the subject of that property, just for full disclosure for the commission, the future land use map has been changed to identify that property as public was a public because it is municipally owned. We had this identified as industrial, uh but that is publicly owned and there is this longer term vision of getting all of the um maintenance and parks facilities there. So this is a change from the last future land use map.
Anyone else have any uh? Anything they want to discuss? You in particular, council members?
Uh, Housing Authority, you said what? Next month is what we're looking at?
July, last May, we're in July.
Okay, July. And then I remember there was a comment on the definition of workforce housing. Define it. Do we have, is it defined in there?
I believe we added a definition.
Okay.
Yep, that's great, yeah.
Just one edit throughout the whole document. Every time Schweitzer Mountain Resort is referred to, as of two years ago, they've dropped the mountain resort. It's just Schweitzer. And I get corrected all the time in my work for that, so.
Right, and the EDC is now the. Now the Economic Development Council is now the ponderate. Incorporation.
Uh, ponderate.
Economic partnership, yeah.
Yeah.
That's their new name.
It's a little pet in yours. Any other uh comments or points of discussion? Anything we want to bring up for the commission's benefit?
Is there a drill down? There's, there's lots of mentions of SPOT and public transportation in there. Is there a drill down on how to support SPOT as a, the city of Sandpoint?
Well, we, we do give them, they're in our budget every year, are they not?
Right, they're, they're in the budget, but for a long, uh, long-lasting future of SPOT and in our portion of that, adding more stops, more pickups, more buses.
More shelters.
More shelter. Yeah, there was, I think there was even a spot in there about some decorative uh shelters as well, too. The only reason I ask is I think this is coming up, isn't it? In terms of SPOT and their money and the money that they're running off of right now?
Every year.
Every year, yeah.
Mm-hmm. But, but they did, they, they got a lot of attention in the two thousand nine plan because it was all happening right then. It was all. Um, yeah.
Well, and it's a great project that all four towns worked on together. So that was the first time that.
So continue to work with SPOT to identify and invest in creates a best stop location such as shelters and amenities that improve comfort function aesthetics and accessibility to maximize transit use and ridership and coordinate continually to improve transit connectivity to and from adjacent communities, Schweitzer Mountain Resort and other destinations. So.
I get there, but with the funding portion of it, how do we, how do we maintain SPOT as the city of Sandpoint?
Well, I mean, I think the intent is in there.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we're not, and then it's, you know, up to council every year, how much they want to budget, right?
What's missing from there is using spots when we have peak events.
Huh.
Or um
Like that's a bill.
Because we're requiring more and more that those events actually use SPOT.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Because of the impact. So special events is, is missed there in the public transportation.
So I think that, like to your point, I would love to be able to put something into perpetuity for SPOT. However, it's, it's nice to have them come to council and have us either celebrate them, ask questions of them. Does it maybe, you're, obviously we want some continuity and it would be great for them to know that they're going to be okay for fifty some odd years. It has been nice having them come up every year and have that be a budgeted item so we can discuss this in the public and let the public know.
They, they used to come every year for budget presentation and I, I don't know why they stopped a few years ago, but.
I would love to see a presentation.
Yeah.
I think it's when David Sims.
We have them last year. We require them to come in and make their request for what they want. They have to put in a written request, but they have to make a presentation.
He's the new ED. I know David Sims isn't.
He's not doing it.
Um, Amy, I was just thinking as per um Jen's comment and uh item E, and that's on page seventy-seven of the PDF. Coordinate to continually improve transit connectivity to and from uh adjacent communities, resort, event, you could just write events, comma, events, and I think that would capture the intent.
I've actually, since I actually did have a note on the SPOT thing as well, the same, exact same um goal six E. I wasn't going to bring it up here, but since you brought it up, um, it does mention Schweitzer and other destinations. One destination I have to throw it out there because I'm working in there all the time and I'm very close with them is the possibly the, the Pine Street Woods um Sled Hill property, which is not yet open to the public, but within a year or two will be. And that's basically going to be a new public recreation place, you know, a mile from city limits. Um, so I actually pulled up the SPOT roadmap today and looked at it. Would be quite a, it'd be a new route basically, but to go from Dover instead of going highway two, you go up West Pine Street and around.
Oh, boy. Yeah, good luck with that one in the winter.
Sure. Yes, that, that road is all right, but the, the, one of our objectives in recreation is to better connect people to where the recreation is and where the trails are and uh as that sled hill comes online, it's going to be really cool to, it would be really nice to have local kids be able to access it without depending on their parents.
Thanks.
And not just for sledding, but for summer recreation as well.
Pine Street, Sled Hill, Pine Street or um Greta Segway area and then also by Travers, because that's also another comment that we had heard from Ms. O'Reilly that as things develop, uh Travers to be able to use SPOT and YMCA is right there. Like that's a, so.
And KLT is employing Boden right now as a, a master planner for their sled hill property. And they're aware of this and they're planning to look at a bus turnaround, putting a bus stop in there. So just putting it out there. I mean, this is more of a conversation to have with the SPOT board.
Right, because since SPOT is free and adding a new route is
Yeah.
can be expensive.
We fund it.
We're probably gonna need to talk to SPOT.
Yep.
But the, the Kinnick's Land Trust crew is thinking about this, providing public transport connectivity to the sled hill
Nice.
in a couple of years.
Because I imagine it's a great benefit for parents now. They're gonna have to drive their kids up to Schweitzer. They can see it on the bus.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
Here she comes.
That was quick.
Deb, we were just um.
Talking about me. Quiet.
Council was maybe kind of wrapping up the, the questions or issues that they wanted to see addressed or maybe felt were under addressed.
I shared your comments.
Okay, and I sent email stuff to Amy.
Yep.
And Jason and I did have a kind of discussion about the rec part, so we're kind of of the same. I guess.
And the Pine, the Pine Street uh First Avenue.
Right, I sent the email on that. So um you got that about the Pine Street line.
Yeah, yeah.
First and Superior and such, and you talk about, oh, that's not State Highway and stuff. Yeah, okay. All right, sorry, still a lot of that.
Is there anything else that you'd like to bring up for discussion?
My kid got the coaches award. Um, well, there were a lot of them. There's not just one of them, but um, uh hard to really say anything because I don't know what you guys have already said. So um, if I can have a discussion with Amy, I don't want to take everybody else's time up. And if I have anything else that comes up um as I read through for the second time.
Yeah.
Okay. How about you, Justin? Do you have anything else?
No, uh, I think that was it. Uh, there was a wastewater, I guess this will come up with the county uh wastewater treatment enough capacity to service the ACI. Is that something that is, is that in there?
Yeah, it's.
Uh, parking structures and I, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Jason, anything else?
Good, thank you.
Just another big thank you to y'all.
Yeah, thank you. This is great.
Okay, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
My question was about the housing authority and the public lands that we have or the city owns, but.
Um, commission, you guys have any questions for us or any?
Like we get lived and breathed.
No, I'm trying to step up the study. Do we sort of bake in some of these requests and then we'll, we'll take it back into our committee and then?
Right, yeah, we would incorporate these changes, take it back to the commission.
Good job.
And then once you're comfortable with it, send it, schedule the actual public hearing. And then you will recommend a city council who will hold another public hearing.
And I really appreciate answering all of the comments and stuff from the public. I appreciate that.
Well done, Maryam.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And uh both members of commission, members of the council, really appreciate you making the extra time on a rare Wednesday to meet and have this important discussion. So it's been really fruitful. Thanks.
I'd like to thank you guys. Oh, sorry. I'd just like to thank you guys because I've sat over on that side of the table too, and I know how much more tedious your side of the experience is than this side. And then we just get to go in and all that.
Well, you guys just did a six-hour stand a week ago, was it?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Another.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even, even.
Yeah.
And thank you for Sarah and Amy. Very much.
Thank you, Melissa.
And Melissa.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned.